Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 8, 2025. I'll call the North Liberty City Council meeting to order. Stacy, how you doing over there?
Good, thanks.
Awesome. We have roll call, please.
Sure. Park?
Here.
Sidig?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
Leibl.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. There's been a modification. If you're looking at it online, the one behind you there is current. We are removing. I just had it in front of me. If you're following along at home, Forever Green Estates Developers Agreement is not going to be on the agenda this evening. Otherwise, it's all the same. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sidig, seconded by Smith. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda item carries. Item four is our consent agenda. Great question on there. Thanks for putting it back in there. Are there any other? Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Wason, seconded by Park. Are any questions about that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is public comment. Now is the time for anyone in the audience that has a comment or a question for council to let us know if it's not already identified on our agenda for public comment. You sure can. Yes, please. Just let us know who you are.
Sure. Name is Alan Chau, resident here in North Liberty. I had some public comment that I wanted to have about something that my, I already might be kind of late in the agenda and game for the UCD development project, the urban, and just wanted to give some personal opinion. I'm actually one of the neighbors, neighborhoods that are right there across the street from the railroad tracks, brought off of Stewart. I just wanted to know if you guys have been able to do any kind of neighborhood impact to what that, what the residential parts of that's going to be. Understand that it's going to be like a five-story building with a commercial on the ground and then four stories above that. That's going to, for me, in my opinion, for being in that old neighborhood, that's going to greatly affect the persona of the neighborhood because it's really close. I mean, it's probably within about 55 yards of my house. That's actually going to block out, you know, like from early afternoon sunshine, you know, into our backyards. You know, that's going to be, to me, a really huge impact to a very beautiful old part of our neighborhood. I know that these buildings are going up in a lot of places within North Liberty. My consideration is that it doesn't necessarily need to be a five-story building. I think the height of that is actually quite imposing to an old neighborhood. I would hope that you guys would consider that because the idea of the neighborhood being an old neighborhood is actually something that I think that we would want to preserve. There's a lot of places that, you know, big high rises are going in, a lot of commercial buildings, and with all the large, you know, tenant areas and stuff too, that approaching, encroaching, and that close to such a nice, beautiful part of the neighborhood is actually going to really change the look, the persona and everything of such a really beautiful area.
I don't normally have anyone answer and respond, but there's two things. I think everything that's going to be across the railroad tracks from you is going to be residential. There won't be any commercial immediately across the tracks. And Russ, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think those are four-story? Or are they five?
I believe at this point, the proposal is four stories.
Okay.
And I would remind that we have a neighborhood, a good neighbor meeting in, later in July. I believe it's on Thursday at 6:00 here at City Hall, where we'll just have an open forum for everybody to talk, and then it'll subsequently go to planning commission and then city council. So there'll be tons of opportunity for public input.
Okay. Yep. I just wanted to make sure that there is, you know, because I've actually talked to a lot of neighbors and stuff too, so a lot of us are actually quite concerned just because of the visual parts of that and how big it's going to be just right across our street.
Yeah, you got it. And the rule is that anyone living within 200 feet of a proposed change, as Ryan is describing, will automatically be notified of the good neighbor meeting.
Sure.
So be notified of that. Is that this Thursday, you said?
It is. It is the 24th, I believe.
24th.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we actually expanded the radius beyond the 200 feet to pick up more neighbors because we knew it would be more of an impact.
Okay. And so that's going to be an automatic notification to us as the neighbors, or?
It should be, if not, just Google "North Liberty Good Neighbor Meetings," and it'll bring you to our page, and all that information will be right at that page.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Are there any other public comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and open, or go to item six, Josiah, for engineers' report.
Thanks, Mayor. I was give you guys just a quick overview. We got a couple city, bigger city design projects underway, and there's a couple milestones coming up, so I just thought I'd let you know what those are so you kind of have an idea where we're at. The splash pad, the Centennial Park splash pad, the schematic design work, that first phase is wrapping up at the end of this week. That'll be a submittal to city staff review. We've got the Forever Green Road and Jasper improvements, that's the roundabout out on the west side of town, and Jasper Street improvements by the Evermore subdivision. We're working towards 70% submittal on July 18th for that one, again, to city staff review, and then we'll have a follow-up review meeting. And last but not least, Rancho Way Phase Six is currently working towards a 50% review set, and that's August 15th. So those are coming up, and I just wanted to give you guys a feel for kind of where those are at in the process. Quick construction phase update. If you've been on Jones Boulevard, you'll see that Freedom Park Trail is going pretty well. They've got most of that trail through the park paved at this point. So they're ahead of schedule there. North Liberty Road Trail has done a lot of paving, particularly the road widening up by the dog park, some curb placement and curb intake tops and things like that. But the next big phase for paving, I think that's this week, is to pave the trail and the sidewalks in front of Penn Meadows Park there behind the baseball fields along the south side of Penn Street. And just as a reminder, the substantial completion date for that project is August 20th. And, you know, there's, I was going to touch on Centennial Events Center. There's a lot going on. Essentially, there's something going on everywhere on that site, on the roof, on the outside, putting up sheet rock and stuff on the inside. They're paving sidewalks and access drives, so it's a busy place. And again, that one is September 28th is our completion date, so getting close on a lot of these. That's all I have, aside from questions.
Questions for Josiah?
On the trail, well, we have to close that whole road down when the, when the mixers start going in to pour.
They'll be down to one lane with flaggers. When they're bringing in the mixers during the day, they'll have flaggers up like they've had a number of times, but once the, once they leave and they close, those will open back up to two-way.
Thank you.
And they finished paving on the trail. That was wet cement when I drove by a little bit ago.
Oh, Freedom Park?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Josiah. Ryan, item seven is city administrator report.
Okay, thanks. Just a few things from me this evening. At the last meeting, I talked about our social service process a little bit, and all of you should have received the scoring rubric that we're asking you to complete. We are asking you to have that returned by July 14th, so next week. I would note that we initially talked about, about having that on the July 22 agenda. It appears that we may have a couple people gone for that meeting, so if that's the case, we'll kick it to the first meeting in August, but no later than that. So more to come on that, but if we aren't, I'll let you know if we won't be having it at the July 22 meeting, but certainly at the, I think it's August 12th, maybe somewhere, the first or second Tuesday in August. I sent out some information to the group about the Iowa League of Cities Conference, so a couple of you have inquired already. If you're interested, please let me know, and we can get you signed up for that. That's usually a pretty good conference. This year it is in Des Moines, so not as far away as it could be, but still far enough where if you want to participate in the entire conference, it would probably make the most sense to stay over. So let me know if you're interested in that. And then finally, and timely, given our conversation tonight, the properties at 240 and 242 North Main were removed this week. So there's a big hole there now with a bunch of debris, and that'll, that'll get removed this week. So that property is starting to be prepped. You'll notice that the shed remains. We're, we're using that for some storage, but eventually that will go as well. So that's what I have this evening, Mayor, unless there are any questions.
Other than me missing the buildings coming down, I don't have any questions for you. Anyone else?
Ryan, have we heard from any of the business owners out along Penn Street with, again, I share my concern and disappointment with the DOT kind of changing midstream with shutting down both ramps. I think those businesses, while, you know, not using Penn Street for 380 northbound, I was using it southbound to come home and, you know, frequenting those businesses. So I want to make sure we have an open ear to those businesses and trying to gauge that impact that the DOT is having there.
We, we did talk with one business owner, actually closer to Rancho than Penn Street, that voiced some concern about the after-work crowd. So we're staying in touch with them. We shared some detour information that the DOT provided us, and we'll continue to, we've asked for them to keep us in the loop if, if they have issues or concerns.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else for Ryan? All right. I'll move on to item eight, which is mayor's report. Meeting-wise, over the last couple of weeks, I'll say that I had an emergency communications board meeting, Joint Emergency Communications, our dispatch center for Johnson County. A member of each council or mayor from the, each of the cities and the county are part of this board. We meet quarterly, sometimes not even that frequently. It's a pretty fine, well-tuned, well-oiled machine at this point. One thing that we did talk about last Friday is that how the state is changing the 911 funding. That will be coming out to entities such as the JEC across the state. All of those dispatching centers, except the State Patrol, are going to have 911 funding formulas changed. And what that will mean for us in Johnson County is that it's about an 80, it's a $90,000 hit that we won't be getting from the state as a county, that we as communities, as taxpayers, will be needing to make up for in that. So it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it is money that will be taxed for that would have otherwise been paid for. It has been from the state's level. So just a new law changing what that implication will be for, for us on there. Tomorrow, Brian and I sit on the Metropolitan Planning Organization in Johnson County. They meet every two months. Eric is consistently there in the audience, but if you three, whatever, two, three, would ever want to be a part of it, you're welcome to sit and attend. They are at 4:30, and tomorrow's is going to be down in Johnson County at the Health and Human Services Building. Starts at 4:30. You're welcome to attend. Usually wrapped up in about an hour or so, but tomorrow's our quarterly meeting or every two-month meeting for that. And then I know that you're all probably well tuned into this, that next Monday is the pantry's ribbon cutting, big deal. So I figured you'll all be there anyway, but just to announce that. And for those that don't look at our packet in depth and don't ever get to the end of it, I wanted to highlight some of the things that our staff have been doing and that they make reports on, on a monthly basis for us. In what we saw in the report, I'm going to highlight a couple of things on there. It may not sound like a big deal to most people, but when the toilets flush and water leaves our community cleaner sometimes than we might otherwise expect it to, it's because of our wastewater treatment plant. In the past couple of months, we've had two plant operators that have successfully passed their grade four examinations, which is the highest level to achieve here in the state and some of the highest across the United States. So Daylon Tusing and David Furler, if you ever see them, hear their names, those two gentlemen work right here in the city on our behalf, and that's a pretty, pretty high standard to live up to. If you have kids, the rec center and the library, the pool have been incredibly busy this summer. There is so much going on over there that it can be a little bit mind-boggling sometimes how that's all juggled. So between the library and the rec center, I wanted to just highlight how busy they have been and thank them for what they're doing. Cool thing that we saw in our Parks Department report this, this week was landscaping. They do a lot of work out there. If you ever see this crew with the blue, the old blue recycling bins, they're pulling weeds and they're doing some trimming. They did a, they redid a roundabout and over near Freedom Park on that trail on Fairview, there's a roundabout that the streets department knows about in the wintertime. It's probably kind of a pain to go around, but it kind of slows traffic down. The Parks Department really made some nice upgrades and changes to that very, very small roundabout. It looks not like a weed patch anymore, and it's got some neat landscaping in there. And we have a new North Liberty Police Officer who has not only gone through certification and training, but she's also completed what we call field training out in the field with members of our department. So you can, we can welcome Bree Fleur. Hopefully you don't have an interaction with her unless it's for good public reason. So welcoming her to the community. And finally, our community relations, the city slate that we talked about last meeting is an ongoing events that happen here throughout the city. We, obviously, it's something that we heavily endorse, but we get a lot of support from businesses here in the community. So I think a few council members have said this in the past, please recognize and patronize those businesses that are supporting these events. We get, we got a nice comment about that through our email system here just this week. Take the kids out there, take families, there's something literally for everybody to be a part of. So just wanted to highlight a few of those things. They're in our packet already. None of this is just mayor knowledge. It's stuff that's out there for anybody to read. So with that, I will move on to item nine, our council reports. This is a time for our council members to highlight things that they've been doing on behalf of the city since our last meeting. Yes, sir?
So thank you, Ryan, for getting me a tour of the Centennial Center. Yes, they are, somebody is doing everything out there. They were painting, drywall, cleaning up, you know, a lot of mechanicals and stuff. So it's going to be quite the impressive facility once it gets, that gets going. And also toured addition to the street shop, and that really added some nice space. I remember when I, when we built the building, what it looked like, and, and this really has added some extra spot for more, what's that machine, the sign-making machine? Yeah, it's up there. So good use of that space too. So, and then Eric has graciously agreed to go to MPO for me tomorrow.
Yes.
And, and then Emergency Management Agency is hopefully going to let the bids tomorrow for their new storage building in Tiffin, just down the street from where the new roundabout will be.
Nice. Thank you. Any other comments or inputs?
I will go, but I'm going to go after Paul.
Interesting. Okay.
Yes, so I attended the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition Community Meeting on the 27th. Representatives of Greater IC talking about how housing and economic development affect each other. And then I also attended the Iowa Cancer Registry presentation they're doing in 99 County Tour on June 30th, talking about cancer rates in Iowa and, and how we really don't know what's causing all of them. It's just a mix of different things, probably. So it's, it's kind of depressing to listen to, and hopefully we can turn that around
Do you have anything cheerier to end on before I move on to Paul?
Nope.
Sorry. Thanks, Eric.
Well, I thought it was special, but apparently you gave the Centennial Park tour to, to other councilors too. That's okay. No, it was really great. Really excited about that place. I just envision all the fun things we're going to be able to do there, and it's, it's incredible. I joined the Board of the Iowa City Area Sports Commission recently. They do a lot of amazing work to bring sporting events to the entire area, which, you know, generated a ton of new visitors and, and business for our, for our local economies. And I'd love to help if I can, you know, North Liberty become a little more involved in, in some of those events. And I gotta, I gotta give a shout out to the Venardo's Circus at Colony. That was, that was a really fun time. I love seeing stuff like that come through town. So I hope they, like to welcome them back. And the fireworks at Penn Meadows were, were awesome. You know, I know we're kind of constricted there as far as how big we can go, you know, but I would, maybe someday we can go a little bigger, even if we have to move locations. But that's, that's my own personal feeling. And then if I got the, I give the shout out to the police departments doing the meet, the new, meet the officers videos. So I thought those were great, and I wanted to give them a shout out. And if you wanted to follow them on Instagram, it's @NorthLibertyPublicSafety. And that's what I have. Thanks.
That's awesome.
Then we'll still, Mr. Parks Thunder there. I want to welcome him as a member of the Think Iowa City Board of Directors to the Sports Commission and voting him in. So appreciate Paul stepping in. And I've told Ryan a number of times, you know, hearing a lot of the reports from that commission, you know, some of those things have to stay quiet because they're out bidding for things. But North Liberty is primed for a number of those events, even if it's overflow, if it's a support, or now, I believe with Centennial Park and a number of other amenities that we have, we're primed to be a location to, to host some more of those events. So glad to see Paul on the board, and, and we'll be looking forward to seeing some of those things come to our community. So, thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I came up with something a little more cheery.
Okay, good.
You already mentioned city slate. I just want to mention that air is in the park on Thursday.
Yeah.
I believe these t-shirts will be on sale, so if anyone wants, I'm in my North Liberty era t-shirt, come on out and buy one. Have a good time.
That's a way to do it, way to pull that out. Item 10 is our Cherry Street Firehouse presentation. Item A is the Shy Pattery Fire Station presentation.
I will introduce Natalie. I think many of you recognize Natalie. She has been instrumental in several projects here recently with Centennial Center and City Hall, and has done great work for us on those two projects and has a presentation for you this evening on some of the work we've been doing on the fire station.
Take it away, Natalie.
You get me set up, Russ?
There we go.
Perfect. All right. So Shy Pattery was asked to essentially look into our options for renovating, potentially expanding the existing fire station. I'm just going to go through some background here regarding the study and how we got to the reports that you guys are seeing and your, your packets there. So the first thing we did is we put together a group from the fire department. We have a large group from Shy Pattery as well, including fire department specialists. And we met with these, this group of people. We also met with basically all of fire staff at one point, getting feedback from everyone. The first part of the process that we do when we're looking at potentially renovating a building or adding on to it is we look at the existing site and we look at the existing building with the fire station. It has been in the city of North Liberty for a very long time. We did not have any existing drawings originally. So one of the things that we did and made sure to go through was a full scan of the building to make sure we understood how the building was currently being used and our potential for adding on or supporting any sort of renovations. We walked through, we did photos. We also had small meetings. We also had a large after-hours meeting where we met with all the staff in order to gather input from them as far as what they were hoping to achieve in this addition and what they were hoping to be able to modify about their existing space. Some of the principles that we got out of those meetings was that there are essentially three top priorities when it comes to developing new space for the fire department. The biggest one was turnout time and the response rate. How quickly can they get out to the apparatus and get out of the building? Day-to-day function was another one. How do they operate on a day-to-day basis, doing paperwork versus training, things like that? And then the last one was the quality of life. There are a lot of factors that go into supporting the health and wellness of our first responders, and that was no different as far as priorities with this building. We went through the process of identifying typical industry-standard spaces that current fire stations have now, as well as vetting any sort of specific or special spaces that City of North Liberty would like to see in their station. So we developed a room-by-room space program that basically gave us about a square footage that we were going to be targeting in order to accommodate all of those components. Once we started looking at the space requirements and how we could get those, those things on site, we ended up going with a two-story, essentially administration space that would be an addition. And one of the concerns that came up during our initial study was the structural stability of the existing apparatus bay roof. We were then asked to go a little deeper and to do some investigation into the roof and what it would take to actually keep that portion of the building versus removing that portion and rebuilding it, starting from new. When we did that analysis, we basically came up with, as you can see here, it's, there's about a fifth of the roof that could even take the additional weight of the systems that we were trying to put in the building. Part of it is increased snow loads from the adjacent building that were impacting and requiring that reinforcement. Another part of it is the fact that we were going to be putting sprinkler pipes and additional alarm systems and ventilation, things like that, in that apparatus bay. So what it boils down to is that in order to do that, we would have to remove the entire roof, reinforce the structure, and then we would have to also remove the ceiling in order to tie that structure together. So we were looking at a pretty exhaustive process in order to do that. We were then asked to look at an alternative option in order to do a brand-new structure for the apparatus bay portion of the building. So the two-story portion remains exactly the same. The option, we called it Option A1 because essentially the floor plan is exactly the same, we're just demolishing the entire existing apparatus bay and replacing it in kind with new structure. Typically, we would not build with wood trusses for a emergency response building in today's time period. So the fact that they were wood trusses is kind of a concern to begin with. We did also have some height limitations with current apparatus that's in there. They can't actually maintain those trucks within the building itself. They actually have to pull them out onto that front area, sometimes getting a little far into Cherry Street in order to maintain and clean and do everything they need to do to those trucks. So that was also a concern. One of the other concerns that we ran into is that the newer apparatus that we're seeing, it's taller, it's longer. We, we end up running into some hiccups as far as being able to house that equipment in the space that was currently available to us. So even with the reinforcement of the structure, we would still have to go back in with a ceiling, we would still, like, we would still be limited by that height. When we look at this alternative option, A1, we gain additional height. We can then go two stories all the way across the building. That allows us to be able to get on top of the trucks within the apparatus bay itself. We also gain some mezzanine space for additional training, also training equipment, things like that. We do have the potential that we could look at an additional pull-through lane or two based on how things lay out, whereas we couldn't do that before because we didn't have the clearances. So again, the differences between these are relatively limited, other than completely different structure. In the original building, we also had a couple of walls that we have to maintain because of sheer forces. So again, going back to that structural analysis, our alternative option allows that bay to be completely open. So again, when we're talking response times, turnout times, no walls, it's going to be a heck of a lot easier for, you know, everybody to get across to the right truck, to the right vehicle, to get out of that space quicker. So the original estimate that we had was about 15.89. out of that space quicker. So the original estimate that we had was about 15.89 million. That boils down to about $536 a square foot. We're in about the average of where we're seeing kind of numbers right now. With the addition of the structure, the replacement of the structure, and the demolition of the rest of that building, we do go up about 1.4 or 5 million in order to accommodate that difference. But again, the opportunities that that offers us regarding the potential for a third pull, third or fourth pull-through bay, the additional height for the apparatus and those garage doors, the additional storage space, training space of that mezzanine level. I mean, it's, it's pretty essential that they get those, those types of spaces if we're going to be doing an overhaul to the building. Just, not even for today, but for the future, those trucks only get taller and longer. So we're just trying to set things up to make this future-proof, hopefully, for us. We do, and we have looked briefly at phasing on how we can do this, because the other component of this is we do want the fire department to remain operational as things are constructed. So our initial thoughts regarding phasing, again, once we get into design, we can work through this, you know, a little more fine tooth. But our initial thoughts are Phase 1 would consist of demolishing the first or the last-built two bays of the apparatus bay of the existing building. And then we would build the new station. We would build the two stories. We would build all of the admin spaces. We would build the new pull-through space, the new pull-through apparatus space. And then, once those are complete, we then swap over to the east side of the building. All of our admin staff, basically the entire fire department, then swaps over into the new building and they activate in that space. Once they are cleared out of the existing space, the entire existing building would then be demolished. Then we would rebuild the apparatus space in order to continue the structure that we had already started with Phase 1, and then complete that out and add the additional parking lot out to the east for staff. So, any questions? Anything I missed?
It seems like, oh, sorry.
No, go right ahead.
Seems like the, the snow load was a big expense. Can you just elaborate a little more on why that became an issue?
So because the additional height is needed for those pull-through truck bays and because that's the desired, again, with new trucks and things like that, trying to keep that apparatus bay as one cohesive unit, we needed to put that right next to the existing apparatus bay, kind of in that original option or within the revised option. Those bays end up being about a two-story space because of the height of, like, they pop the, the front cab piece, yeah, off. And so there's this tilt component to it. There's also cleaning and maintenance of the things on the top of the truck. Right now, they don't even have the space to climb on the top of their current trucks. And the most recent piece of equipment that they're looking at is actually two feet taller or so than their existing trucks. So it would be an even worse situation with any sort of new equipment. So because that added that additional height, snow load is basically based on how the snow could pile up against a wall. When you've got a two-story wall here and you've got like a one-story building here, you have this whole area that can fill with snow. So the weight of that snow becomes very substantial. And so that's why that space to the, the left of the little green box became so important, is because we were putting a lot more weight on it than it was really designed to handle.
Got it. Thanks.
When the existing bay is demolished in Phase 2, how many trucks or apparatus would need, need to be displaced or moved or not have a home during that time? Or would the new spaces created be able to accommodate those because they're a little bit longer and intended for bigger vehicles that we don't have yet?
Correct. And so that, that does kind of play into it.
Okay.
So the thought is, is for those first phases, where we are getting rid of two bays in that first phase, too. So we have to figure out if there's equipment that we can be storing outdoors. You know, I know that there's concerns, like, we can't store any equipment outdoors over winter, you know? So it's, what's a priority to have in the space and how can we cram things into the existing versus what can be parked in the, in a parking lot or what can be parked out front or things like that. When we displace for Phase 2, the thought is, any of the vehicles that are left or were in that space can then be put over into the new space that's been constructed.
Yeah.
So, and hopefully, it can hold a little more than what that existing space could hold.
So Ryan, with this campus, and to follow up on that, new City Hall, new police department, parking spaces, is, is there an option for some movement and some acceptance of staff and vehicles so that we keep it central, so that our call times or response times don't go up?
Absolutely. And I would, I want to speak for Chief Plots, but he's already been visiting with other department heads and obviously those in the Civic Campus, but elsewhere on, you know, what we can, what we can do from a storage standpoint. One of the ideas we talked about, and I'm, I'll let Brian elaborate on this, but was actually if we needed to, bringing in portable units for our guys, our, our guys and gals to either sleep in or work in or whatever, whatever's needed. I think we're still, obviously, as we've noted pretty early yet, and so as the design moves forward, those details would be ironed out. But I, I, you know this already, I appreciate the question, but we really focus on collaboration here and everyone's willing to, to help to make this happen.
I know that the ambulance services had a big problem with their, ambulances getting taller and taller and the building couldn't house them. And we talked to them about that one time we were touring. And that was a, a big problem where they could put things and stuff. So, so obviously, the building has to be much taller, probably needs to be bigger than you think about making it because it's probably already two-fold and stuff. So, you know, so I think that, you know, that's, you know, try and figure out as much space as you can get in there because it'll be all taken up, you know? I've watched enough This Old House to know that when you try and get into an old building like that, you're going to find something that's going to be a disaster. I think it just all needs to go and get redone.
This old firehouse.
Mayor, to piggyback on Johnson County, maybe this is more for the chief, what's the discussion with a partnership with J-CAS for housing a unit?
I haven't, I haven't talked with Fiona in the last couple of months, but when we last talked, we spoke about is a second fire, our second fire station in the location of the property that we purchased, is that the only place they're interested? Or could we entice them in a new facility on Cherry Street? And she said they were certainly open to that, either one. So again, I can't speak for her, but that has been an ongoing conversation over the last couple of years because certainly that's a strategic goal of mine, is to get an ambulance in this city. And so I, I think, I know in the memo that I wrote some time ago, year and a half ago, you know, we spoke about that and she would be willing to entertain that. So.
We don't have space identified in this building.
In this building, though? The new building? Right. We would.
We do have space in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I definitely want to make sure an ambulance is accounted for.
Okay.
So I, again, not speaking for her, but what I have seen is they, they've been more reactive and proactive with partnerships with, with locating units outside of their central district. And they were way out west in Iowa City in a free warehouse that was given to them by the county, right? And then when they were in Coroville, it was, although a thought in construction, was not a primary partnership with them, and they kind of felt like a second wheel. And, you know, they were put in a closet, literally, sleeping in a closet for a while until some additional space. So what I'm saying is, is they, if, if we approach them early enough in this, I, I think it can be one of two things. It can either be a revenue generator, where we're charging rent for them to be here, or they are financial partners in a bay, in sleeping quarters, in office space that they're going to need. And I think they'd be, again, can't speak for her, but they would be happy on being on the front end versus the back end of, you know, constructing and moving around to different departments. So I certainly echo your wish and want for them to be in town.
And we will certainly continue the conversation, for sure.
So while you're there, maybe I missed it, the, the point of equipment storage during these phases, Chief, do you feel like it's workable, the things that need to be stored outside, can they be, are we gonna?
I do.
You feel like a plan is okay to get through that phasing?
I do. In fact, I kind of came at this with the approach of no building, what are we going to do? How do we, what does continuity of operations look like, right?
Yeah.
That scared me because, you know, with that much equipment over there and needing different pieces for different types of calls, it's a concern. And when I started to see the phasing that Shive suggested, it made me feel a lot better. Because as I look at the drawings and the phasing, it appears to me like we would be able to fit at least five truck, four trucks, if not five, during the entire time at this facility. And so we can be a little strategic with regard to, you know, what truck do we maybe put somewhere else during the middle of summer, middle of winter, when we don't use our grass truck very much? That can go somewhere else. You know, so those kinds of things we can certainly talk about. And I'm much more confident now that I've seen the final presentation of moving forward. And I, and I think we can work through those issues.
Okay.
As Ryan indicated, I had some really good conversations with Public Works already. So we've, we've got some conversations started and I'm confident we can make some work.
Okay.
Mayor, a thinking aspect that Shive didn't touch on, and I'd like you to, it's in the report, is kind of more the hazardous condition of the current building. It's old. We talked about that. There's an asbestos issue. There's VOC issues. You know, I don't know where that VOC is coming from. Usually that's paint and carpet and things like that. That concerns me. Certainly needs to be a consideration of this group as we look at making the decision of what we're going to do, because the health and safety of our employees is, is primary.
So, believe it or not, those VOCs and the, one of the biggest cancer potentials and things that you're actually looking at are, are actually the suits. So anytime they go out to a fire or have exposure to an incident like that, those gases are retained, right? So some of those suits are being stored in an office right now. There's, there's somebody working in a space. Those suits have been washed, but they don't ever truly lose, you know, those compounds. So there is a concern with that, is that we, you know, we do have, so we, we look at a fire station from a red, yellow, green air quality standpoint.
Cancer risk reduction zoning?
Correct. And so your apparatus bay is obviously a red. We do have, in the new plan, we do have vestibules, airlocks that allow a transition from those red spaces into the green space, which would be your bunk rooms, you know, your typical living space, your gym, your training room, office spaces, things like that are all on the green side. In the existing building, we don't even have a location to really put an airlock. The only space that's, that even has the possibility has a set of stairs in it. It also has access to the bunk rooms immediately. So there's, there's not a great location to provide that. We do have the asbestos concern. Whether it's piping, ceilings, I know, are a concern, things like that. We're not entirely sure that everything was gotten from a carpet standpoint, things along those lines. So there's a number of health concerns that are going on there. Again, just trying to keep the wellness of, you know, employees and everybody in mind, even visitors at that point, making sure that we keep them out of those red zones unless they're opened up and available for access with easy breathing. There also isn't necessarily room with that shortened ceiling height in the apparatus space to, to get that additional kind of full-blown exhaust system that that space should have. Right now, we're kind of dealing with ceiling fans and some exhaust plugs and, and things like that. But there should be a full evacuation system of sorts to help make sure that we're getting that fresh air into the space that we need. So those are kind of the big ones. As I mentioned, there is a set of stairs in order to get from the office space down to the truck bays. That's a tripping hazard, also slows people down in order to get from, you know, your, your office out to apparatus. So.
One more question for me, Mayor, probably for Russ. There was discussion about concerns of setbacks and kind of maximizing the space. I'm guessing that's for the drive-through bays. It looks like there's only two. Is that true, Chief?
Two right now.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, part of the vision, number one, in, in the old town, with the public district, we've said you need a 25-foot front yard setback, except if you have buildings that are, have a lesser setback, then you can, you can enjoy that same setback. But part of the vision for the Cherry Street District is to do more of a traditional neighborhood with reduced setbacks for the purpose of pushing those buildings up, too. So I, I see that fitting easily within what, what our goals are for the Cherry Street District.
Thanks, Mayor.
Where would those two additional, or maybe I put a number in there, additional bays and drive-through bays be located? Are they part of what we see if they're just kind of repurposing?
So you can see-
Part of Phase 1 right there?
I don't know which one's the best to look at here. So you see the two brand-new ones that we're, we're basically saying is already included.
Yep.
So the next two-
Okay.
-that you see there do have the potential to extend down and through. Essentially, what would happen, we're looking at like mechanical, electrical space, things like that. Those components could actually be relocated to a mezzanine space or something along those lines in order to provide that space to get straight through. And it just depends on how we can make turning radiuses and things like that work from a site plan standpoint. We know we can do at least one. It's the, it's the second one-
Additional, you mean?
Yeah. We can do one additional one.
Okay.
It's the second additional one that we would really have to look at and see if we can get that turn.
Okay.
Make sense.
That's what it looked like. I didn't know what was in those rooms. So that's, that answered that question, then?
Yep. Down on that level.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not the Cedar Rapids Fire Department, for goodness sakes. Okay. Are there any other questions? We don't normally, but go right ahead, Alan, you're here. This is your neighborhood.
Question, would the traffic then come off of north, off of Zeller, up Main, to get to that portal?
Come off of Cherry Street?
Yeah, likely it would come from Cherry Street. We're showing from the south, just because that's the worst turning radius as far as that truck path is concerned. Yeah. So they would still be, yeah, they would still all be coming out on Cherry Street. So it's just that kind of back end getting through the pull-throughs that would be from Main.
And then, to be clear, they would come off, come down Main from Cherry Street-
Most likely.
-in order to enter that backside there. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Anything else on this topic?
I don't think so. We'll, we'll come back with some proposed next steps. I think this was good discussion. I appreciate everyone's feedback and hope to hear from us soon.
Sounds good. And what a great report, very thorough. So thank you for the time and energy that you put into it. And it wasn't just Shive, but it was staff, everyone doing this. It's informative. If you, in the audience, but anybody watching, anybody in the public, this is out there now to start diving into. We would appreciate any feedback that you have to offer. I'll move on to item 11, which is the local option sales. I'll move on to item 11, which is the local option sales and service tax. And item A is resolution number 2025-82, and this is a resolution calling for the submission to registered voters, the proposal to impose a local option sales and service tax in the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Ryan, or actually, could I have a motion for consideration first, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Park, seconded by Smith. Ryan, could you give us a pathway here, what we're hoping to accomplish tonight?
Sure. So we've had two discussions on this already, which have been very helpful in generating what you're seeing in front of you this evening. The resolution highlights really two areas where this proposed tax would be spent, 50% on property tax relief and 50% on capital projects and housing initiatives. I won't read the whole language that's in there. But I, as I mentioned in the memo here, I asked a few people to take a look at this, folks who've had experiences, experience with referendums and campaigns, and they believe that this language, from a marketability standpoint and a succinctness understandable, it's good to go. And of course, what I tried to do, what we tried to do is capture the consensus from the group, there was a lot of opinions, a lot of discussion, and so we tried to meld it into one statement here. And with that, we would, if this group wants to move forward with a local option sales tax, we would recommend approving that resolution this evening to get that ball rolling.
This is a great summary, not summary, these are words as few, I think, as we can possibly put in there, based on the feedback that we all provided at the last meeting. And understanding that there are things that we may not necessarily have gotten in here that we wanted to, or specifically in the ratios that we would. Personally, this feels like something that is marketable, something that we can identify. I think Counselor Smith pointed this out in the very beginning, and that this needs the community's support and buy-in, so making it as simple and as identifiable as possible gives it the best chance for approval. And understanding, I think, a question, I'm not sure who asked it last time, but those that have been a part of getting a conservation bond passed, for example, those and other campaigns have been consulted, and they like this language as well. So I also don't really have any problems with it, I'm in favor of it. That being said, are there any questions, concerns, or suggestions, finally, on this? Or recommendations?
Appreciate the staff, they kind of blended everybody's kind of thoughts on that pretty together, pretty good. Appreciate the input from the Affordable Housing Coalition, reaching out to us about some things too, but I think this seems like the, probably the best language that kind of gets a little something for everybody, so.
Yeah, great, I appreciated the reach out from Jessica as well, and kind of the push to get us to, you know, commit or have a larger commitment for housing. But I want those in that corner, and I think, Mayor, you were as well, and we had great discussion up here. I, you know, I stick to the folks that will be voting for this, the citizens of North Liberty, we need to get this passed, and having the language in there that we do and not setting forth some restrictions or something that's more suited for one group in our community is going to help get it passed. And that's what, to me, is most important. We will have the option, future councils will have the options available per the language, and housing is part of that, and they, you know, they may choose down the road, housing projects that could be more than what a 20 or even 30% could be. And so it's just, you know, it's important for our community with the restrictions that are coming from the State House with revenue generation, that we get this passed to give us the ability to do some additional things. And I'm very pleased with the work that this group's done and the work of staff to get it to where it is, so appreciate the conversation.
Yeah, I'll just say that I, I mean, I feel much better about the language that I see here today than I did the last. I will be a no on this, because I think it's important, there may be something in here for everyone, but that doesn't mean there's something for everyone, right? We can, we can do housing if we want to, we don't have to do housing, and I think it's something that we should be committing to more. I am all in favor of the local option sales tax, and if this is what the council chooses to adopt as our language, I will be out there vocalizing my support, but I'm not in support of it right now, of this resolution, I guess.
I appreciate the edits, I think it's easy to understand. I agree with the affordable housing piece, but also, you know, I appreciate the thought that, you know, this needs to pass and that, you know, this council, other councils, we can designate money to affordable housing, should we, you know, choose to, and I think we all would choose to. So I, you know, I appreciate the flexibility of it, but also just in favor of it, I think we need it. I think, you know, it's gonna, we're getting ahead of what's potentially coming from the state, and I think it's necessary, so I'm for it.
All right, Stacy, could we have a roll call, please?
Park?
Aye.
Sittig?
Nay.
Wasen?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one, we have language for a local option sales tax.
Thank you all very much for your comments and inputs out there from the community.
Go sell it, Nancy.
We'll move to item 12, which is North Central Middle School East parking site plan, and item A is staff and commission recommendations, Russ.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a small parking lot addition northeast of the existing roundabout. This is in the location of the former temporary buildings, which have since been removed. You can kind of see the light dots to the south of the parking lot, that will be the future for Evergreen Road extension and the future Ismen area, so it's well outside of that area. The planning commission considered this item at its July 1st meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Thank you.
Any questions for Russ? Is there an applicant presentation? I'll move on to item C then, which is resolution number 2025-83. This is a resolution approving the preliminary site plan for North Central Middle School East parking, 180 east for Evergreen Road, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wasen, seconded by Sittig. Are there any questions about this? Stacy, could we have a roll call, please?
Wasen?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Item 13 is Creekside South Two preliminary plat and site plan. Russ, item A is staff and planning commission recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, as you mentioned, this is a two-part request. One is the preliminary plat, which lays out the lots. We don't have a lot of public infrastructure here, so it's mainly just the lots and private streets, and on the right-hand side shows the location of the preliminary site plan, which would be at the north end of the property. Majority of the property is zone C3, and then they left out that part, the north section with RM 21, where the townhouses would be. The city council may recall that when the C3 zoning was approved, it was pretty limited with the number of uses that they could do, and this was agreed to by the applicant. So we have a small number of commercial uses that would be allowable in that district, and that there also be no direct access to West for Evergreen Road. And here's a concept plan for the overall development, three higher-density multifamily buildings, and then the townhouses to the north. And then here's the four lots with the preliminary subdivision plat, and then here is the preliminary site plan. It just shows two buildings, four units in each building, total of eight units and a private street accessing. From a transition standpoint, you have zero-lots residential units to the north, and then townhouses, and then higher density, so that kind of is a really good transition from a zoning perspective as far as intensity goes. So, planning commission also considered both of these requests at its July 1st meeting and unanimously recommended approval of both. Thank you.
Any questions for Russ?
Just as far as we know, the concept plan has not changed, right?
The plan has not changed, correct.
Is there an applicant presentation?
John Maron with MMS Consultants, good evening. Nothing formal to add, just, again, this is the initial step here to work on some site plan for those townhomes, they're comparable to the townhomes on the west side of Bernardi, they're immediately adjacent to the zero lots as well. I'm available for any questions, if you have any. Any questions for John?
Same question, John.
Yep, just- Nothing's changed.
Okay, yeah. So the trees that are there along the north side of that, they're on the, they'll be outside of the scope of this, so they should not be-
They're right on the property line. One of the discussion topics and things that we worked with staff on during the review process for this was to make sure that we would clean up that area along the fence line. There was an original drainage swale along that north property line as well, and then the existing detention basin that's east of this property, kind of on the northeast corner next to Front Street. Those are all part of the, once we get into the site construction plan phase, those would be planned to be restored to their original design that was done when the west side of the Creekside was developed.
So, the buildings look nice, you got elevation, so.
Any other questions for John? Is he walking away? It's okay, John, thank you. Item C is resolution number 2025-84. This is a resolution approving the preliminary plat for Creekside South Two, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Park. Any additional questions?
Still a lot of extra traffic.
Stacy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wasen?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Item D is resolution number 2025-85. This is a resolution approving the preliminary site plan for Creekside South Two, Lot One, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Sittig. Any questions? Traffic. Stacy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Wasen?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 is the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment and TIF ordinance. Item A is public hearing on a proposed amendment to the North Liberty Urban Renewal Area. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comment on this item on our agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item B is resolution number 2025-86. This is a resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa, and approve urban renewal plan amendment for the expanded North Liberty Urban Renewal Area. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wasen, seconded by Smith. Any questions about this?
Can we just get a little brief?
Sure. This goes back to a project that came in front of you several months ago, Murray Elite constructing a 50,000-square-foot sports complex, gyms, physical therapy, number of multi-purpose spaces. The idea here, in order for the city to incentivize this project, would be to establish or amend our urban renewal plan. So tonight, the resolution on here amends the plan to include just that area where Murray Elite tends to construct, which is, would be the southeast corner of Dubuque and North Liberty Road. And then the, well, I can get to the, I can come back to the TIF ordinance here, that's what we're doing for the urban renewal plan.
Okay. Any other questions? Stacy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wasen?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. And then item C is first consideration of ordinance number 2025-16. This is an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the July 2025 addition to the North Liberty Urban Renewal Area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Park. Do you want to continue?
Sure, I'd just say that in order for the city council to, the city to collect TIF dollars to incentivize a project like this, we have to have a, have to have an ordinance in place, and so we're asking tonight that you approve the first reading. You should also note, we'll be working with the developers over the next few weeks on negotiating the agreement. We've talked about some of the bigger terms already in front of this group, essentially an eight-year agreement with a $1.3 million rebate, a few other things that will work out within that agreement, that should be in front of you at the first meeting in August, after the ordinance would be assumingly passed.
Any questions? Stacy, roll call, please.
Wasen?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. And item 15 is Johnson County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and item A is resolution number 2025-87. This is a resolution adopting the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan for Johnson County in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Wasen. Ryan Orr, Brian, do you want to provide some context on this?
I would just say that the mayor's asked me to read the plan to you at this point, so we'll start now.
It's only 500 pages.
Yeah, I would just, and certainly, Brian, if you have something to say, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I know there's been a lot of work by a lot of different people that has gone into this, a couple folks on our team, including Counselor Wasen, and we're just fortunate enough to have an agency and a group like EMA and Dave Wilson that helps us put these plans together.
So it's required by the federal government every five years to do a hazard mitigation plan, and then if this is in place, and if something happens, you are eligible for FEMA dollars and stuff. This isn't like the plans for if something acts, this is designed to see it, prevent things from happening. And some of the things that we do at the city, you know, the capital improvement planning that we do, you know, making sure that, you know, when it's time to buy a new fire truck, we have a new fire truck, and things like that, our ordinances and the building codes are a big thing for that. It saves a lot of money, so every dollar you spend on planning and preventing things, you save about $6 if something actually happens, so there's some cost savings to it. In this area, seven out of 10 of the most likely hazards are probably weather-related, which we have less control over.
Can't mitigate that so much, can we? Are there any questions or comments?
I would just comment, that was a really interesting read for a guy that loves our cities and this whole area, there is a, it's a breakdown of a lot of valuable, like, really cool information, so if anyone was interested, maybe I'm nerding out on it, but I thought it was a pretty great read.
I'd ask you what your favorite passage was, but I'm afraid I know the answer. And for everybody's knowledge, anybody watching knows, this is, it is out there on our website, on our council page, the PDF is there, and it is 500 pages. Are there any other questions? Do you want to recite your favorite passage?
Read the whole 500 pages, but-
You're getting there. Stacy, could we have a roll call, please?
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wasen?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any old business? Any new business? Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna ask, since we've been talking about affordable housing, I'm curious, I don't think we've heard anything about the ARPA funds that we allocated for that, I'm just curious when we would.
I will, I don't have an answer for you, but I will make a note of that and report back.
Any new business? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Park, seconded by Smith. Any questions? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.